Jeff, I'll let you start.
You start.
Start and talk about the PHG Energy project that they've been working on.
You know, three months ago, this was my first came up and saying to work with you one night. Back to that time, you adopted the, this is the term looks on the first little study, etc., for why this is going to be the study. Since then, they've been with the public works committee at his name, Bernie, Bert, all those, they actually want to come bring them up at least, but we've been through that process and we get to, so we're really, you know, point down, this is no actual line of work, an actual quiet night, but we do hope that we have a, we consider race, hopefully two weeks from now, to actually formally adopt the program, move forward, actually get in a real contract for actual project, so you remember we got the 3.5 billion dollar loan approval from the state federal bank, or the Q E C D program, I believe what it's called, we'll discuss it a little more in a minute here too, that 3.5 billion, so project was committed, so there's some deadlines there, but for that money, it's gotta be, I guess something they missed one that's big way late, so with that, I think Mike, Chris, just want to turn over to you guys, and I'll give you your prepared information, we'll go tonight.
Very good. Jeff, I appreciate the opportunity to sit down and talk more through this, I think everyone has seen or...
Should've got email to them, I think Thursday, Friday, Friday.
So I'll just start by going through a little bit of the background for those who haven't heard it, but we are with PHG Energy, we're affiliated with Thompson Machinery, the Caterpillar dealership here locally, and had the opportunity to come, kind of work out a project with you guys, to look at a, not just something that's on the energy side, or the green energy side, but is also on a waste energy side, using stuff that's publicly available here in your town, so we've been working with Jeff, Lee and the team for the last few months to try to put together what makes sense, and in the process of that, we did do the submittal for the Qualify Energy Conservation Fund, which is a pretty neat opportunity we have through TDEC to fund the project, using money that basically the government is going to pay the majority of the interest on, it's something that they're putting out as an opportunity to deploy funds that are available from the US EPA, and that has already been approved and went through in October, and it's got a six-month deadline to get started on using the money, so that's kind of the fuse that we're working with, to try to understand how we need to put together the project and work through that. We put this proposal together at the same time we put that proposal together for the Qualify Energy Conservation Fund, so this ties in with that, in addition, we've just put in a proposal with you guys for a grant from TDEC, we won't know about that one for the next couple of months, but an additional opportunity to further enhance the project. But all of this centers around using material that's available here in Lebanon, and using the wastewater treatment plant sludge, and taking the ATAD offline, so we've got a real good opportunity for savings right off the bat, and now can augment it, and at the same time help the local industry by deferring what would be $60, $70 a ton to get rid of material, and now we're able to bring it in and give those people a service, as well as an opportunity for added revenue for the city.
Chris, the one thing, the rebate on the interest, I believe it's about 70%, so whatever interest we have, if we go through this program and find it, and the other one that they did, applying for is a quarter million.
Correct. That was a grant. So that one is not approved yet, but it's in the process, so, no, I appreciate the clarifications. So the goal here though is that we're not using incineration, we're using a process called gasification to convert this energy, and gasification is something that we just worked through with TDEC on establishing how you permit a gasification project, and it looks vastly different than it would if we were just to dispose of the material in an incinerator or some other fashion, and TDEC is very supportive and wants to see these types of projects work, and we have, since we've already gone through the process with them, we've got a template to start from as well, using the same type of materials, so it's something that is endorsed by TDEC, obviously they put the grant money in it, and also on the backside, won't be an onerous thing to permit and maintain as a permitted project, because we have their support coming in, and what that looks like, so we're taking that material in, we're using, we've got two models of gasifier, we've decided to use our larger gasifier, even though we're not going to fully burden that gasifier with the project, but have kind of decided that this is a neat project for you guys and what it will do, but it's a neat one for us, because it's so close to home in someplace that we can bring people and kind of enjoy the mutual benefits, so it made sense to put the larger gasifier in, in the perspective of not only making it that showplace site, but also giving you guys the opportunity of upside on being able to put more material through the system, so we're only going to burden this gasifier with the core economics, to about half of the material that it can consume, and because of the material we're putting in it, you're receiving fees for revenue from, that's all added revenue that can come into the project as well, we'll work through some of that, some of those numbers as well. So that's kind of the quick background on the project, I was just going to step through the proposal here, and available to answer any questions or any issues, anything that you guys need to go over, we're happy to answer tonight, if we don't have, answer a time tonight, happy to come back anytime here, or address any questions via email that are there.
What kind of, should I go through?
Through the gasifier?
Yes.
The main focus materials right now are wood that is already available here in its pounding, and looking at sludge instead of going into the ATAD, and then we've got the opportunity to take tire in as well as part of the mix.
You work the steam on that lamp, you see it's been about, you've been in apartments all the way along city limits.
And part of the, you know, of gasification, and I won't go into a lot of the detail, but one of the neat things with gasification is that the same machine processes all those materials and can process other materials, so you're not limited to those materials or those specific mixes, if something else comes available, that is an opportunity that you can put that into the system as well.
And I, back, pig back that little bit too, this is very one of the ramp, we actually first thought is, there's a big puzzle, this is one piece of the puzzle, we're starting, and a small signal, I mean, expanding, can't expand our timing to ultimately possibly, you know, household markets, until we're starting with a smaller type project, and not trying to grab the whole pile at one time, so we just buy them off a small portion.
But are the trucks have wire there, or do you take metal?
The process itself will actually deposit the metal out the bottom, and the effluent from the process is a product called biochar, so it looks a lot like charcoal, but it has beneficial uses, we've got two identified customers for that right now, for other projects that are paying to use that in their process, so that is other added revenue that can come into the system as well, so.
Take pallets and crates, we'll have nails in that kind of stuff, so you're good, beside this river, wood brush, you know.
One thing that I would want to know is, is when we looked through, it said that by not running the ATAD, it's going to save us $175,000 a year in electricity charges that we had around that, so that will help service the debt, but I would be interested to hear from Robert, it's $3.5 million project, 25% down, what would your recommendations to be to fund the project, like with 25% down, would we take that out of reserves, Robert, what are your thoughts on that? I'm not just putting you on the spot, but I am putting you on the spot.
Well, we've got the grant for the full amount.
Loan.
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 Loan for the full amount.
We're still going to have to come up, and when is that loan going to?
And then, I'm going to be able to, if they question you at your right, what the loan process will come, from the drought out, like our Florida, we brought in loans that come from out, so we might have to cash on this, so.
You have a 25% down, first get go, and if we don't have that loan, would we take it from the reserves and give it to them, and then reimburse ourselves?
Probably.
From that, and then the one thing from an operational standpoint, Jeff, that I want written into the contract, is I want specific, every 30 days, I want a written report of our progress and where we're at, because Johnson Controls promised us up and down the status report, we did a $7 million project, and they didn't tell us from day one what the hell was going on, it was our biggest single capital improvement project in the city, and we had no idea where we stood ever, and how many times did they say we were going to get a report, and we never got one, I don't think it's too much for us to just know every 30 days, what's been going on in the project, just a one-page document, here's what we've done in the last 30 days, and I would like that to be part of the contract.
Well, you think that's been from the very beginning, and as we move forward, maybe at some point, time you might go to a core report, you know.
What you've been doing, what you've been doing is reporting, what tons did you take in, what dollars you received, what savings.
We're starting through the whole construction, here's what we've done, here's what we've done, with your expenditure of $3.5 million for the citizens' money, someone to ask you, like people ask me, through the faith, why would Johnson Control?
That's not a problem.
People ask me all the time, hey Robert, you spent $7 million on this project, what's going on? I saw a fellow changing light bulbs the other day.
They did a lot, boss.
I suppose, unless there'll be a management reporting, Jeff.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, we said, but we never got it, that's all.
There you was an animal, right, there you was an animal.
Just through the construction phase, so we can answer the questions that were routinely asked, and just so we can stay part of the process.
Absolutely, and I think to further that, we're interested in having you guys be part of the process in the middle of it, because we are, we'll be located at the wastewater treatment plant, and it is going to be critical to integrate with the existing systems and not distract from existing processes too, so.
You don't know us very well, you really don't know us at all.
Maybe we won't today.
Rob, we had our first meeting Friday, I believe it was, and we've had several phone conferences since, including today, on the loan, it's early stages, we normally use TML for our loans, and that's not going to be an option with this one, it will go to market, and we've got bond counsel, it's been recommended to us that we secure the services of a financial advisor to work through this process with us, and so we're going to get some, you know, I would just say to you that right now, I think we're in such an early stage on it, I can't give you an answer to your question tonight, but we will shortly.
Okay.
Also, we'll tell you that once it does, once we get all the data, we're going to have to move fairly quick, we don't have a lot of downtime to get it done, because there is an April deadline on.
Right, and that's why I was wondering, I mean, you know, if they were starting before the money had escrow, before we saw that, or did we get the money in portions, could we use from the reserves to meet these benchmarks yet?
It's essentially with a large, we actually large, we'll pay that contract reach moment, and state reversal, so we're actually building that right now.
All right. So just flipping through here, there's project analysis, kind of gives the background of what the project is, how it's working, we will be making electricity with this to offset the parasitic load of the system, so we are going to take the ATAD off, but we do need to cover our parasitic loads, so we don't just add that cost back in, but we'll be netting approximately 125 kilowatts to the system too, that will be on the demand side of the wastewater treatment plant, so that will be incremental savings in part of the system, but we have a system very similar to what this will be in Covington, Tennessee right now, using a cranklink cycle generator, it's very low maintenance, very easy to operate, there's not a, you know, a stringent requirement for operators in it all, they can run unattended by itself, so it's not, it's not a very complicated system that will require a lot of maintenance or special consideration.
Historically, when you'd done Covington, what have been your annual maintenance costs were, be, could you just get us that, I'm expecting to have it here, what can we expect down the line, what's been the average maintenance cost on that?
We can look at that, and we've actually put some of that in the projections too, so we've got the whole system.
And then includes that maintenance?
The whole system, right. So there's the project background, we can go through any of that, and then we do have the process flow, if anyone wants to get into more of the details there, but did want to, Jeff's got some other economics that we ran, some sensitivities today, if you look at page 11, I think it is kind of the core, the core of the economics, that we kind of built the project on, but we did want to kind of highlight a little bit of the flexibility and what the system, the same system can do, and look at the effect of throughput and the effect of tipping fee that are there with the wood, so.
Which is pretty dissonant, but I passed that, so I had to have a real update of page 11.
Yep, so if you look at page 11, this is all that and more, yep, so, you know, as you can see by what's in the handout, we've tried to be conservative with what we originally built the project on, and tried to build a lot more into the upside of what's available and what's there in the total system, so again, the big pieces of it are on the, if you look at the, along down the left-hand side, you see 32 tons a day, that's what's basically been built into the proposal, but you see if you add 10 more tons a day, they go to 42, 52, and up to 62 tons a day, and then go across and look at the $5 a ton, $0.5, $10, $15 a ton, what that impacts on that adding income for the project, so.
First column, the written number that's actually paying somebody.
Correct, correct. Had to pay for that to get wood.
We don't think that's happened, but that's, we addressed, I'll play a worse case scenario.
Correct.
We have a lot of manufacturers here in town that produce quite a bit of wood, and they feel like it will be, along with our chipper so's, you know, we'll be able to get fees on top of eliminating our chips.
Did we do a letter, Mike, after, before we did a letter, sent out there, signed out to several, 10 or 12 of our larger industries here, I think three or four responded back, all four responded back, were, you know, yes, what happened off the business, they all have consults of it, and they also believe that, you know.
They get points for the environmental part too, so.
And so say some of that.
Jeff, in relation to the other project we've got going down there, where would this locate?
This will be back, the solar plant is right along the, solar plant is right along the railroad, our grass, about front of the plant, this will be back, it's its own campus, or it's the button down to the nowhere down there, where the gates are, and it would, no way would they accomplish it all, but the solar plant is just right along the road, pretty small, it's a pretty small area.
And one of the things, it didn't really, originally, didn't have a charge for the bio charge ready to use, and I said, well, you've got a customer base for that, and then you need to figure that, because, you know, a lot of it is return, but it is, so I asked him to put that in, and I think you've got more, over time, you'll be finding more opportunities to find a customer base for that, our, the process is figured, a lot of it at 32 tons, but it can handle up to 62 tons. Covington, how much did handle?
12.
12.
So the economies of scale are pretty dramatic in enabling the project to pay back. So that's, again, what the project's basically built on, kind of the foundation of the dollars and cents, making sure we could work that out, and a good deal of time spent trying to figure out the right equation there and the right equipment, but.
As I said more than once, some of you heard me, we've, you're talking to a lot of folks with huge projects over the last 18 years, we're going to, Robert, he'll tell you how to, and I'll teach you that, so we have a lot of cost, and what he's got to show us, and hope that.
How much training will I need to operate this?
Exactly, any more aggressive, because of the, there's a training program.
Yeah, well, and, you know, we're local too, so we're here for the long haul to make this work, but the training is really more on the material handling side than it is on the operation side, so all machines are PLC controlled, so they're basically controlling the operation, the equipment.
PLC.
Programming, logic control, computer control, so.
I'm going to guess.
You know, you would say you're right.
It's part of, part of wearing the sales and an engine hat, sometimes you don't switch gears fast enough, but, so it's all computer controlled and all programmed in, and the design of it, and using this, this cranklink cycle generator, is to make it easy to operate, so we don't have to have very highly trained operators, really, it all comes down to material handling, and just someone to own it, to make sure that people aren't throwing, you know, metal and, you know, other chunks of stuff that they're trying to get rid of into it, and then make sure that the flow of material in the machine is.
Our idea is that we might be able to end up changing to more of a knuckle boom on our chipper service, go around, just pick up, cut down the manpower that we need, and then transition the help that we need over to here, so that, they have figured of hiring one full-time person, in addition to that, we're hoping that we'd save an extra $100,000 or whatever it is, by transitioning what we have, our manpower here, giving them, you know, something to learn, and then kind of help manage it, as he said, on this project. So, you know, that'll be kind of one of the unseen benefit numbers that really, you know, are not shown here.
I think those are, some of the people that have to look by products and things, just like Jeff was talking about, sending out the letters, I think that there can be quite people to pick up there, because we probably offer a good rate to dispose of it, or they would pay us cheaper than what they're paying to dispose of it elsewhere, so we're not on this where we're paying, we're getting it brought into us and getting paid to do it too, and then produce some energy.
That's a win-win for everybody.
Yeah, and to the mayor's point, and then it's green for them too, so they get the added benefits.
A lot of companies are required to make green inside their plant through their own companies, and this is one way that they.
Part of the, a lot of the automobile manufacturers are going to zero waste initiatives and pushing that to their suppliers too, so just a lot of opportunity here to make that work.
Let's make sure the feasibility study comes out, we get Derek.
How long will it take to build?
Good segue, if you look on, or if you have a page 12, it's going to take about a year from start to finish.
In order to get the things.
Get it built, commissioned and operational, so.
It's about a third or four by day project.
There's a lot of, a lot of work that's going to go upfront to making, again, we've got a lot of, a lot of work to do to make sure that we integrate correctly into the system and don't disrupt the system, to make sure all the material flows and how everything works is going to make the most sense for the project, and we've got, the longer lead time equipment is the power generation equipment, so we'll need to get that on over sooner in the process and make those decisions, so we get that going in the process.
Thank you, page 12.
So, yep, so page 12 kind of lays that out in kind of the rough form, and then looking at the, okay, there's the responsibility matrix of what we've signed up for and what we need you guys to do on the project, as we've laid it out, and if we can look through, if we're discussing any of those, if there's questions, we're trying to just kind of lay that out as far as what's there in the project.
I spoke for you guys about you shouldn't have, I told Chris, tip of the question areas, any of that what's our stance there, we don't know that question, answer that question right now, but what are costs we might have to, you know, have to raise there, so we'll look at it, most of them are like, it's permanent, most are pretty routine, a couple of them have a cost to identify those along the way, we don't need surprise.
It's not a big footprint, so the site work is not going to be that, so it's not going to be there, so, I was looking at this, and the one thing I saw that would be the cost to get the underneath the power feed.
That's true, and that's our, you know, if you look at, we've got a box, you know, of equipment we're going to put down there, and it's going to have to connect out to electrical, and it's just a question of, we've not included that in our scope as far as if we've got to go all the way to the other side of the wastewater treatment plant to get power, that's just not in it, but we can look at that when we get the site.
That's a good point, I have a comment, Rob, if we say something like, I love what the prison stuff, you know.
What's Bill and Jeff guys think about this?
I believe it's all.
People, a lot of groups, a lot of ideas, this group is by far the ones that impressed us in stability of their company, and, you know, and what it's doing, and the environmental part of it is very important the way to, and the possibilities of, you know, start at this, first step, first block, and then moving it up to other things.
As well, since I remember in the public works and stuff, that it's more like a modular type deal for where you can expand, and, I mean, it could be relocated if we had to go to this, and then if you roll over into, of course, you'd have to get into a whole lot more separate garbage and things, there weren't some nice stuff, but then availability can be added to this, on down the road, so that's, that was, talking to Jeff about that, you know, we could have those regulations coming down for us, it would be pretty simple, but we've got, we've got land for the roads, it's going to be a little bit more of an option.
Helps us get there, when the new roads come down, we'll already be on the right path. Any other question, you have anything else, Chris?
No, I'm here for you guys, so.
If you've got, look, if you got any questions right now, it's the question that we sent out, probably we've got some documents, which we got to answer, so we're still, also learning ourselves too, so if you got any comments, please share with us, and share with Chris and Mike, and hopefully we can share, and he has the information for our actual procurement, you know, project contract we're talking about, Robert, it would be, hopefully be a little sooner than two weeks or nine, definitely, that would really just move forward, so this is just information, but please look at it and ask any questions, so we can find out all answers from the front here, you know, so, Chris, it's got a two or three there, it's an act player, so if you're not locked there, we'll be here anytime, we'll be fine, according to your plans.
I'm tracking this yet.
Okay, thank y'all for coming up.
Mayor, thank you for your leadership, I know you spearheaded a lot of this, and finding Mike and getting this started, as well as the bond stuff, so I appreciate the opportunity.
This is good logic, and I think, I think counsel, I think y'all are pretty excited about it, I hope so.
Oh yeah, I am.
What you said, we'll put two or three other things, I asked, I mean, I want safety in your room.
Okay, so we should have the full version of the design code, I had seven copies, I think we're okay, and then we came around with a demo, should be coming around, basically just explaining the highlights in the version that you received last week from the version that's here, it's the exact same version, I haven't changed it, but what was sent out before, a lot of the points have to do with appendix B, and we can go over those a little bit, mostly since the first read of the document, there were just a few things that we found that needed to be corrected, and I've put those in, 14 points of what has been changed in the code, since the, mostly it's just things like the V6 now has, is going to be the RP district, they had that in breakfast before, and we just missed it on this table, so we put it back in, we had the transportation warehouse that allowed these stores, we had that in what was the P3, which is now the CS, so we switched that to what it should have been, which is the general commercial, commercial general district, everything that we're doing is just cleaning up, trying to make it close to, as close as we can to what is there now, you know, we're returning back to what is there now, the B4 district, or the general commercial that allowed car washes, and the table that we approved first, I fixed that, so that's pretty much what's going on here, there was also some reference to multifamily use in the RP2 district, which is the district of the Castle Heights Military Academy, and the land uses, we don't allow multifamily, so I took it out of the table, the setback table, and the density table, because it doesn't make you. table, on the density table, because it doesn't make any sense. So that's mostly what we do with this table, just correcting the names, correcting, you know, we just saw that it wasn't consistent for what we're doing now, there was no reason for that to be the case, so that's what we're doing. And it's in pretty, pretty full detail here, if you want, I can go over every single one of them, but that's just a cleanup job. I did want to point out that number three on my memo was actually, makes commercial not removed from CM, but the gas station portion of commercial neighborhood was. And that gets me to the other change that I made, big change that I made. Each district now, instead of just referring to the tables, has, has the uses, let me get to the first one. Has the use categories listed under the description. So now we have uses permitted, allowed, conditional uses, prohibited uses, and by doing it this way, the CM is allowed to keep convenience commercial, but we put in prohibited uses, no gas stations, so you're not allowed to have gas stations. Same with the square, we can leave all the, all the uses, but we don't allow packaged though, we don't allow check-in cash, so we can specify that out. So, I brought that up with the consultants, we're down with the consultants, by the way, this is our document, we can do this if we want. And, and I was going to have to do this anyway, so I just put it together to make the text and the tables consistent, but you don't have to go to the tables, you can go to the text and it should be.
Yep, follow on this, move from C and get to finish B, what is it, C?
CM is commercial neighborhood, that corresponds with B one, that corresponds with B one.
We now got a possible tension of a gas station going up in my way, this won't affect it really, our way won't be detrimental to it.
The commercial neighborhood is mostly around the square.
Now, the Speedway, yeah.
No, I want to check the Speedway. Speedway is going to be in the red area, which is corresponding with B four, but it's going to be commercial general in the new code, so that won't have any effect. Now, this is going to be, a lot of the commercial neighborhood is on Main Street, west of the square, there's a few other places you can see going out, Park Avenue and that area, but anyway, we want to focus on Speedway.
I think the big thing is more simplified, where someone coming in, looking at our rigs, being able to come to that chart, get a good idea real quickly, and then, then they can go into it even deeper.
Yeah, yeah. So the government text, we got a chart depending on how people want to look at it. I did get rid of SRO, which stands for single room occupancy and strap, that was, that was taken out in the text of appendix C, but it hadn't been taken out in appendix B, so I took care of that. I had a request to delete bike pad plan from the reference in the purposes, so we did that. And I added a statement saying single family, two-family residential or not, that are exempt from site plan review, planning commission level. And then there was a, we had mentioned before gravel parking lots, we went back to standard work, I missed one because I just go gravelly, left the R house in my search for it, it showed up, so I fixed that. The Atlas changes, which is what's here, and I left the big one upstairs, I've already done for the agenda, but the only thing that we've changed, the OP, the B six districts, no report in Blackwell, state office, Blackwell asked to come out of the OP, and the OP, B six is kind of historic office business for Main Street, so no report doesn't make sense, neither does Blackwell's office. So those came out and went to CO for no report and CS for Blackwell, state. Those are the main things. Just at the very end, there's one typo that I know is still in this code, which in the CM, it says in the text, but not the table, the text says townhomes are allowed, there should have been a single family residential is allowed, it's correct in the table, the text has typo, but I decided not to change it so you guys could see the same version. That's kind of a quick run-through of what I've done. There's some issues that have been brought up to me, just in private, from various members, looking at the B six, the OP, the historic district type regulations in that zone code, looking at accessory uses, residential's an accessory use in commercial, looking at mobile home parks in the R two, and residential high regulations in the B three. So that's, those are things I didn't address, but have been brought up to me. And then the rest of it, basically, if you have any questions, if you need more information,
How soon will you have this bucket list called?
That bucket list is going to be, you know, once we pass, this does not address the bucket list, this is trying to take all the controversial stuff out, as soon as we handle this big document, we can start tackling this, you know, like next month, I can start bringing in the checking the cash stuff, Ross mentioned that we can start writing ordinances for that, and we can start knocking off names from the bucket list. Matter of fact, I think that once this passes, the next five or six months are probably going to be me writing ordinances about, to update this.
How, how are we going to work, I mean, like we've got apartments on the bucket list, but yet we've still got them in the code.
Right, right.
So, I mean, is, how are we going to handle that? Because, I mean, if we pass this, can they come in next week and start pulling the apartments away this interrupt?
Yeah, I mean, they can do it.
I mean, and that's not just apartments, we're not talking about all.
Yeah, that's progressive, that's not changing.
No, that's not changing, that's what they can do now.
Right, so we're trying to stay with what they can do now in this new code, so if they can pull it today, they should be able to pull it when this is done. Now, like for example, the B three district or the commercial service district, the height, if, if I need to write a code that says residential in this district can only be so high, that would be something that I can bring back and then the whole council can go on that issue, because I don't want this, that issue to drive the vote on this, we want those to be separated.
Well, for what, it was getting, that's what we were discussing yesterday, you have CS now, then if you go to the new CS deal, then some of that allows five stories, so without allowing apartments, five stories to start going in.
Right, it would, but it would now, like the current code allows that, so this would allow, but the current code already allows that.
So, so you'll let change, then you come back with restrictions, if you want to make it forward right here, no, for today, the same day, the same day, it's part of a process. What he's just doing is cleaning up what we already got, and then the bucket list is essentially those things that are important to us, that we as a council, because like me, as soon as we get this done, then I've asked him to write for the very next thing where we can do, like Chattanooga, we're, we're going to go out for the check cash and says you can't have one within a quarter mile of each other or within 500 feet of residential. So that's one of our bucket listings, then we get off, then we can go to another one, and another one, and those will be just single one-offs to go back into this book. Those will all go with the plan mission first and the city council agreement.
Right, because we can't wait to pass this to do that, or else this will never be passed. I think what they've done here really cleans it up and then gives what's each one of us, if you've got a problem with apartments, or you've got a problem with something, then we can as a group individually and then collectively attack those specific driving forces.
That's like what's down with it, let's get this passed, let's give it to the, to the, 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 the.
The things we've got, things we have issues, specific issues.
So, like the, the mobile home parks in the R two, that, that would be something that is allowed now, would be allowed in the new code, but as soon as that new code gets adopted, we can start relooking, do we need to do something on that limitation? So this is to not be controversial as much as we possibly can, and then to bucket this is all the controversial stuff, we'll build on those individually.
Well, I was, I was under the impression that we didn't allow any mobile home park within the city limits, so why would you guys be in R two?
We, this, R two right now allows mobile home parks, we don't allow individual mobile homes to go on single family lots, a single, single wide mobile home is not allowed in the city unless it's in a mobile home park or replacing an existing single wide. And I've actually added in here that if a new one comes in on a single lot that, if you have a mobile home, you want to move a new one and take that one out, it needs to be less than five years old. So that's as much as I can do to address that issue, but there's no new mobile home going to be moving into, no new single wide that'll be moving on to any of the new lots. So it'll be in R two.
That was changed since I've been here for forty, like, from, in the last day, you've got a park, how many, it's got to be how many, how many lots or against whatever, it's a memory number, twenty pounds on my plate.
But it has to be a park.
It's got to be R two. So, that was another place for you.
Where's that the one, you got the amount, that can then get addressed.
Apartments are, he's grandfathered that in R two, and he did, was it, he was the tenant back there, some hall, eight years ago, so there's only years, they can't go back to this.
Below the, below the lots, they don't, state code won't allow us to do anything. If it's, if it's here now, as long as it stays there, they can't do anything about it. If they pull it off for more than thirty months, two and a half years, then we can say we can't go back. That's state, that's, that's how the state.
So you go into the neighborhood, your existing lot, buy a lot, share a house, and move it on, say, you live in Mawserian, but not in Oklahoma. Who is more, who did it for, who's more protecting the neighborhood than who's being? He just going to change it up, just going to change it.
That's going to lead to Mawserian homes, that's separate.
Homes are, they need all the requirements, because I just dig that up.
We have to treat, single mides are different than anything else, double wide, modular, whatever, we have to treat like any other single family.
This is just, again, what Paul's saying is, this new, this one here doesn't change it up, doesn't change it, if you want to change it, you can, this is ready to change anything about this, same as that, I'm just.
Those things that you're talking about are things that we can add and discuss on the bucket list, but we need to get the foundation, the framing right here, that's why it's so important to get this part. Plus, it says some of the things that the planning commission and that whole panel and developers and everyone have been discussing, that things that are being restrictive to attract the property that we're trying to do.
And once we get this through, this is a perfect example, then we can hear from the planning commission about things that they'd like to see us change. Once we get this, then they can work on the bucket list, and that's what they do.
I'll have the bucket, it's going to be better, certain, I have a contact with certain owners, certainly, that's what we would have handled, but that's what.
Okay, I did have that one, at that page, I have any more things?
Well, anyway, that type of thing.
Well, and you made a good point that day, we were discussing on the P O or something.
Well, I was just thinking, it's not that it's likely to say yes, but I've got like one section where it's going to, they could, and I don't know if they're going to do it, but they could, and I'm thinking, it backs up to this, this neighborhood, and they're going to walk out on the back patio, I wouldn't.
But for the most part, they could do it now.
Yeah.
I mean, all we're doing is, yeah, so if that's an issue.
From our zones, it'd be three things right now.
And there's been a couple of comments like this, where if you have the same zone in different parts of town, some places it works great, and it just matches the character, and some places it doesn't, and that may be something that, you know, that's one of the things on the bucket list, are there areas where you should have, make it match the character of the neighborhood instead of, so a, you know, a B three or a commercial service out on 109 isn't the same as on Castle Heights, you know, they could be, there's just a different character in those two situations.
Or some apartments that are running right beside the interstate, as opposed to a subdivision, so, you know, I think what you and I talked about of having that, allowing this, but it might have to be allowed on a two for a certain area.
And you want to be careful, I mean, like when the Baptist word down, they decide they want the global law happening there, but, but, there you go, you don't want to be interested on property rights, but who's wording interest for the other 20 properties that surround it? But once again, I think that once we get through that, then we should have a work session.
And y'all same, what you feel like that you want us to look at first, just let Paul know too, and, you know, as part of the, of the, please?
One of the things that I'd like to do, but once again, it goes further down the line, once we get this passed, when we have a work session about this, I'd actually like to have a work session, we're the planning commission, so we're actually all sitting in the same room at one time, and they're explaining on their experiences, the challenges that they have, and some things that they'd like to see us do, so we can enact ordinances that actually help them get more efficient in what they do.
What do you want us to explain to you? I don't think, oh, under the uses permitting on the C, now not on the table, but, you know, you've got that highlighted in the usage permitting, oh, but then, of course, it's, it's, six fives on the one I picked up yesterday, page six five. When you get into the, some of the setbacks in the building area. Okay, let's do it, because you change it for the way you get later, because it's got zero setbacks and 100% of the block usage.
What's your data?
That's the one I picked up yesterday.
Yeah, I have a square one laying around, right?
Well, that's, you should have. Zero, six fives, hundred, five.
Six five.
There's something a lot of.
No, no, yeah, that's on.
Okay, eight.
That's a, so it is six five, this is related to commercial downtown, that's the square.
Okay, so that's, so they can go all the way?
Yeah, so there, there's no setbacks, and that's the way it is now, there's no setbacks on the square, and they can use 100% of the lot on the square.
So they aren't on the sidewalk, geez.
Right, the city owns the sidewalk, so it's just that district.
So it's the city, who goes slap?
Just the square. That's because the square just has the character that's on, and that's all it's got.
And if, like for instance, one building were to be dialed or tear down or something like that, if somebody wanted to build back up in there, you wouldn't want to.
I was thinking about the C N.
It's, no, it's actually on six three, at the very end, I realize that this is out here, so we're going to make it be adjusted, but on six three is when the C, the commercial downtown starts, at the very top.
Oh, okay, that's going to be a slight.
That's why it's, looks like the C N, so that's just something, formatting lines.
Spacing. You need to change, you need to change the spacing so it gets up to the top of the page.
The actual C N is the commercial downtown.
Actually, what happened there is a lot of.
You start writing your subway, you can't stand downtown, so it is specific, because I, that's it.
It's not anything else.
Yeah, and you can see.